Oh, yeah.
That time.
Prior to the purchase.
Cell phones on silence.
I know.
Testing.
Did you know that?
It drives me nuts. I mean, come on, fellas. And then there's other signs when it just, you know, things happen and it doesn't tell me anything.
My daily rec and then it comes around.
I used to have a 10 o'clock.
I can't remember.
There's parks.
Is that two thirty?
See about the.
In the afternoon?
At night.
Oh, at night, okay, yeah.
Oh, mine would come by 10:30 a.m., walk through my backyard, the sidewalk, along the house, stop, look at the stairs, and under the porch, turn around and walk down. And then down the stairs and then walk across the house out of the first, out across the street because they used to keep, put their trash out.
So I had police.
He was braised for once. And then he'd stop and turn around and leave.
Got one.
Sue said the same thing.
On the overlay.
I'm not seeing the other person or they're not, them knocking my door or left anything.
No, they're texting. They're texting people. Which I find, I don't like that.
This is a problem.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order the May meeting of the Lafayette City Council. Please rise and join us in our pledge of the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargie.
Here.
Snyder.
President.
Reynolds.
President.
Wees.
Here.
Allersmeyer.
Williamson.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Brown.
Yes, yes.
Corin present.
We'll need a motion to adjourn for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ordinance 2022-09, an ordinance to vacate easements in the city of Lafayette, Indiana. Legal discretion is JSD lots 1, 3, 4, and remaining upplanted land.
Are there any questions? Sir?
No comment. Move we reconvene?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes?
I move for the acceptance of the minutes of April 4th, 2022, regular meeting, and the April 19th, 2022, special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Presentation and disposal of claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
Reports of city offices on file with city clerk's office?
Fleet maintenance, monthly February, renew department monthly February, and waterworks department monthly February.
I remind you that these reports are on file upstairs in clerk's office. It is how we're spending your money, so you may want to take a look. Moving on to ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2022-09, an ordinance to vacate easements in the city of Lafayette, Indiana. Legal discretion is JSD lots 3, 4, and remaining unplanted land.
Pleasure of the council?
I move for consideration of ordinance number 2022-09 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I can never remember when I'm supposed to speak. Well, if we'd had questions.
Me either.
Kevin Riley, attorney with Riley, Teeter, and Schreier, representing the petitioner Hidden Ridge LLC. Hidden Ridge is the owner of three properties on Majestic Lane, 2512, 2791, and 2880. Petitioner is in the process of redeveloping the property for the second phase of an apartment complex off of Twickenham Boulevard. First phase was platted in 1995. A second phase was planned, but there have been some changes to the second phase. So we did obtain, or the petitioner did obtain, conditional primary approval of the replat in 2020. As a condition of the primary approval, we are required to vacate the existing easements to make way for new easements. There, no infrastructure will be altered or moved as a result of these, the vacation of these easements. The easements being vacated, it will not hinder the growth or development of the property or the neighboring properties, won't hinder any access to church, school, other public building or place. It won't hinder the use of any public way, and it will not make access to any other ground more difficult. And we are replacing the vacated easements with new easements. And I believe those are identified in the petition. So happy to answer any questions. Respectfully request your approval.
Any question from the council? Are there any questions from the public on ordinance 2022-09? Being none, madam clerk?
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Wees.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
On to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Ordinance 2022-11.
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 7.06, stopping, standing, and parking.
Move for consideration of ordinance 2022-11 on first reading.
Second.
Been moved in second, then?
Here again, I'll take over if that's okay.
So this ordinance that's in front of you is a result of many, many months of collaboration between the legal department, parking operations, code enforcement, and the parking commission staff. We conducted a extensive overview of all of the current parking regulations in chapter 7.06 to identify where things have been identified maybe as a problem or places that we could update or just things that weren't relevant anymore. So what you have before you today is all of that work. It was considered and taken to the parking commission at their April meeting, and the parking commission did vote to recommend approval to the common council. I did prepare a multi-page summary of some of the biggest changes that you should have, but I'll go ahead and cover some of the bigger ones. And then if you have any questions about anything we're doing, I'll be happy to ask. One of the changes is to eliminate the term loading zone in terms, in favor of a short-term parking zone. This will allow the parking commission to have greater flexibility to do a short-term parking zone based on the needs of the business or person applying. For example, whether or not it needs to be a loading zone or just a 30-minute short zone, things like that. So that is one change. We also have tightened up the language with regard to abandoned and inoperable vehicles to provide code enforcement some more concrete guidance on what vehicles would be considered abandoned and inoperable and the procedures for removing those. We modified the yard parking prohibition. Code enforcement asked for clarification of that because of some of the difficulties out in the field on what is considered a curb cut or what you could drive over. And so this just makes it clear that if you have to drive over grass to get to your parking area, it's not an approved parking area. We've had some issues with people putting up their own parking signs, especially related to some church services and other things like that, or people wanting to reserve parking. So this makes it clear that the only parking signs that are to be erected are the ones that are actually approved by the parking commission. Also clarifies that you're not supposed to modify or change any parking signs as posted. As you know, we have several special parking privileges for things like service contractors downtown, other things like that. We also have informally adopted procedures for like move-ins, move-outs downtown, various things like that. So this language change kind of takes what we already had and makes it more general and allows us to just kind of incorporate whatever short-term, less than 48-hour parking restrictions might be appropriate. The current ordinance had a time restriction for double parking for loading and unloading trucks downtown. It's not something that we've ever enforced because we believe that that's a necessary element at any time. So that language just removes that time restriction. Vehicle immobilization. Parking Operations has investigated alternative methods of vehicle immobilization. Currently, we use a wheel lock, but they've also investigated the possibility of using these suction cups that block visibility and other things like that. So that section's been updated to provide for flexibility if they do find a vehicle immobilization device they would prefer to use over the wheel lock because the ordinance currently just says wheel lock. And then finally, it does clarify the time limit and procedure for appeal of a parking citation. Someone has 14 days to appeal the parking citation to Parking Operations, and if they are not satisfied with the decision of the Parking Operations, they can then appeal it to the Parking Commission. And then also in the penalty, right now with downtown enforcement areas, if you are parked for more than two hours and Parking Enforcement comes by, you're going to get a ticket. But there's no mechanism if Parking Enforcement comes back by again another two hours later and the vehicle is still there for them to take any additional action. So the final change that we made is to allow Parking Operations to issue citations for each two-hour violation. So if you're there two, over two hours, you get your first ticket. They come back around. It's been over two hours later. You can get a second ticket and so on. So this is going to discourage people from thinking, well, a $20 parking ticket is worth it for me to not have to go move my car, you know, all business, all business day. So that is the summary of the most significant changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
If that car was dead or whatever, and they got three, four, or five tickets, does that continue the next day and the next? I mean, is it every two hours between eight and five every day?
Yeah, I mean, it would be, but I would think that at a certain point, if a vehicle, I'm not sure. Parking Operations would be able to answer what we would normally do if there's a vehicle that's left in violation for multiple days right now.
Ma'am?
Please.
Please. John Withers, Parking Operations Manager for the city. We do get that on occasion, and if we believe that to be the case, we'll just void those tickets. We're not going to penalize somebody for a broken-down vehicle for any reason. We'll work with them on that. Seems like someone couldn't afford it, and they get three tickets. That should be the max or something. Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Mr. President?
I'm assuming that the citation, when they appeal that, is done in writing to the Parking Operations. Is that correct? Okay, so all of these procedures that they do, all are in writing? So you got a paper trail? Great, okay. I think that's excellent because I think people probably tend to ignore, like you said, $20. So that's a good change. And the amounts were up as well, right?
There was a, it didn't change the base dollar amount. It did add for some escalation for tickets to remain unpaid after 30 days and then escalation if they still remain unpaid after 60 days.
And I'm assuming that's been a problem, people ignoring that?
That would be a question for Parking Operations. John, do you know how often tickets get escalated from the, if they're not paid within the 30 days? Is that how common of an occurrence that is? Okay.
That's enough.
Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public on ordinance 2022-11? Madam Clerk?
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Wees.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
On to ordinance 2022-12.
An ordinance adding new chapter 8.09, temporarily dumpster and portable storage devices within public right-of-way.
I move we hear ordinance 2022-12.
Second.
Been moved in second. I think you're on two.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you. So the city of Lafayette has always issued dumpster permits for dumpsters that get placed in the public right-of-way, but this ordinance kind of brings everything together in one place, all of the rules and regulations. And so it provides still that if you want to put a dumpster or the new storage pods that you'll see on public right-of-way, you have to have a permit. The permit is good for seven days. It's a $50 permit fee. It can be renewed. The ordinance also puts in some regulations regarding the, it can't become a nuisance. It can't leak. It can't have debris overflowing. Everything that we want to make sure people are aware that if you're putting your dumpster temporarily, you know, on the public right-of-way, these are the rules that are to be followed.
I guess I was wondering, I had that, that issue when I was cleaning up an old house, and people would go by and ramble through the dumpster and throw things all over the place. Am I, to be held responsible for that? Because I was putting it back in.
Yeah, I think, I mean, obviously with all code enforcement, you know, there is, there is discretion and case-by-case, you know, basis. I can't answer that just unilaterally, but I mean, that is what code enforcement, you know, does, and they look at situations. So, but the goal is always with code enforcement to make sure our city is clean and safe and sanitary.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public on ordinance 2022-12? There being none, madam clerk?
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Wees.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
On to ordinance 2022-13.
An ordinance for additional appropriation and for transferred appropriations between major budget classifications in the Police Continuing Education Fund, Fund 2320.
What is the pleasure, what is the pleasure of the council?
I move to hear ordinance 2022-13. Second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of council. I'm Jeremy Deal, City Controller. You have before you an appropriation request as well as a transfer to provide additional and reorganized funds for the Police Continuing Education Fund. The original budget for this fund was formulated conservatively at $117,000. And upon the formulation of that budget, there was some uncertainty as to the complete revenue streams for the fund. A significant component of the revenue was handgun license fees, which were repealed last year as a matter of state law, so we no longer charge those. Subsequent to the beginning of this year, there was some clarification on the revenue in that the state offered a grant program to provide a revenue replacement for those fees. So we did receive a grant totaling $48,000 and change to replace handgun license fees this year, which allowed us to expand the budget a little bit. Along with that, we had a redefined expenditure need, and this additional appropriation and transfer aligns the 22 budget with the needs of the police department. The primary motivator of the additional need is a replenishment of helmets and bulletproof vests for the SWAT team. That happens every five years. So I respectfully request you approve this additional appropriation along with the small $7,000 transfer.
The grant you spoke of, that's one time?
I think the state has said that they'll continue it for two years, so we expect to receive it again next year, but beyond that point in time, there's no guarantee that we'll receive this revenue replacement.
Thank you.
Grant for the budget, as proposed here, ultimately exceeds the current year's revenue stream, so it's an unsustainable budget viewed from long term, but there's adequate resources in the fund to support it this year and to do likewise every five years to renew the required equipment for the SWAT team.
Thank you.
So is the additional $15,000 from reserve then?
Yes. Well, it's actually a total additional of $63,000.
Right, but you said you got the $48,000 grant.
Correct, and the fund balance is currently over $400,000. So there's, there's uncommitted funds there that we can appropriate.
Okay.
Did you say $48,000 or $4,800?
$48,000 was the amount of the grant.
Unfortunately.
Any other questions from the council? Are there any, are there any questions from the public on ordinance 2022-13? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Wees.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
We will need to set a public hearing for June 6 at 6:01 p.m.
Mr. President, go ahead.
Okay, got him, got him.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. On to ordinance 2022-14.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance typically New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R1 to R1B 22334 Powderhouse Lane and Walker Court, typically New Land Holding Incorporated Habitat for Humanity of Lafayette.
Pleasure of the council?
Move for consideration of ordinance number 2022-14.
Second.
Thank you.
Evening again. Kevin Riley with Riley, Teeter, and Schreier, representing the petitioner. As mentioned, we're requesting a rezone of the property at 2334 Powderhouse from R1 to R1B. Habitat plans to subdivide the property and then build single-family homes on the site. If the rezone is approved, the next step will be for us to submit the subdivision for approval to area plan. Current plan is to create seven lots, six building lots, and one lot for drainage. Once the subdivision is approved, the existing house is going to be torn down and a new two-story, single-family home is going to be built in its place. Then remaining houses will be built later. It's not, there is not a plan to build everything at once. They'll be built kind of in sequence. We received a positive recommendation from area plan staff, unanimous approval at the area plan commission meeting last month, and we respectfully request your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public on ordinance 2022-14? Madam Clerk?
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Wees.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Now, ordinance 2022-15.
An ordinance amending zoning ordinance typically New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from NB to GB 1827 Skylar Avenue, Amy Gaeta, petitioner.
Pleasure of the council?
I move to hear 2020-12, 2022-15.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is a petitioner here?
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy Gaeta, and I am here to be able to see if we can do a rezoning for this building that we recently purchased for, from neighborhood business to general business. Our intentions is to rent it out to a person that wants to open a repair shop there, and hopefully we're able to do it. We just recently remodeled the building. I know that it was, when we purchased it, it was in pretty bad shape. We still want to do some more improvements with like the cement, the floor, and everything, so hopefully we're able to do the rezoning on this.
Are there questions from the council? Yes, sir.
Ms. Gaeta, have you been to the St. Lawrence McAllister meetings, or have there been, are they meeting currently? Do we know how they?
I don't know.
Because we have heard some general comments that they weren't for this, but has the Neighborhood Association meeting met for this, or?
No, just for the area plan.
Okay. Can I ask folks from the area plan, were there folks from the neighborhood that spoke on this?
Yeah, we, I think the outline that the staff gave us, being a lot size, they pretty much hit the, I mean, it's pretty much detailed, and it was, again, it was pretty much voted on the area plan, yes.
Okay, so totally non-conforming, then?
Yeah, I mean, it's, as a GB, yes.
Okay, and then were there people, folks from the neighborhood that came to speak, you know, or?
No.
No, no one showed, no one went.
No.
Okay.
I did go view the property, and it's a pretty small lot for a GB.
Okay.
So you said, you're planning on a repair shop?
So the guy that wants to rent it out from us wants to do a repair shop there. He's, he's going to be a new business owner. He's the one, the mechanic, that's going to be working on there that wants to be able to. It's a small building. It's just a two-car garage. It's, it's going to be a tiny business. It's not going to be something huge. And we're willing to, you know, if they don't want cars parked in front of the building, we can definitely, you know, work with the city to, you know, make sure the tenants are, you know, have their parking.
So under zoning is a neighborhood business?
It is a neighborhood.
But that's not, we would have to change it to general business.
It would have to be general business in order for them to be able to have.
General business opens up a whole new can of worms. It can be a car lot. It can be a lot of things under general business because there's, there was nothing that was, that went along that excluded any other item, so.
And it's, it's kind of limited because the building there, it's a garage, so it's like, what more can we really do there, really? It's, I don't know.
How many parking spots do you have there, Ms. Gaeta?
So currently, it's, it doesn't mark them, but there's cars parked there now. I think the cars parked towards the back. There's easily like eight, nine cars parked there.
Yeah, maybe.
So zoned as a neighborhood business, there really wasn't anything that you could rent it for, that somebody would use it as a neighborhood business, so the zoning can stay the same?
It would be very hard. I don't know if someone would be able to. I mean, the options that I saw on the list that the city has, I.
Right.
For like offices or stuff like that.
I talked to a neighbor who lives down the street, and she was not for this.
Okay.
She wanted it to stay small and be a neighborhood business and not more of a general business.
Yeah.
Councilman Reynolds, since you're on the area plan, is there, what are specific things that can be in an NB types of properties? In other words?
It's pretty lengthy, but I think, and right off the top of my head, I, do you happen to?
It's like barber shop, insurance agent.
Yeah, it's, it's nothing. It's, the GB is, is an open book.
Right.
And, and as staff has, and parking, along with parking, it's just not, you know, a neighborhood business is, because if you were going to do auto repair and say you had eight, or 10, or 12 cars parked out in the lot, that's way, you know, it's, it's way over the limit, and.
But if, if the parking is a concern, we can, you know, we're willing to work that out, you know, with making sure that tenant doesn't have more cars than he really should.
There's no way for us to force it legally, can we do? Yeah, you can, once it's GB, there's, you can do anything. And that's why we're, you know, if it had exceptions, we went through an exception list and knocked out all of the things that, you know, car lots, just, you know, just a lot, there's a lot in GB that's just, I don't, I don't care for. I mean, I'll tell you.
Too intrusive.
Yeah, it's just not, it just doesn't fit.
Okay.
And the neighbors in the neighborhood that I've talked to has said the same thing. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you said you did own the house behind it, which is.
Yeah, we do own the house behind it, yeah.
That's correct.
We do.
It's a conundrum for us because we understand what you want to do.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, once the zoning is changed, it opens up a can of worms that if you don't own that property anymore, very many things could go in there that could be very detrimental to that community. And so that's why Councilman Clinker is concerned about the neighbors because they'd like to keep that neighborhood feel.
Sure.
You know, if you, if we could guarantee it was a one, one-hole repair shop and it was just a Johnny, you know, you bring your car over, you get it fixed, you pick it right up again, that would be one thing. But once you, once we change it to a GB, as Councilman Reynolds said, it opens up a can of worms for the city. And so that's our concern.
Would we be able to apply for like special exemption for that?
If you went through and checked off the exceptions, for instance, you may then, if, after we got done checking off the exceptions, you may not want a GB after that anyway. I mean, I'm just using that as an example. We've seen that happen before because there's a lot of, 114 maybe, or something like that. The problem with a motor repair shop is they do tend to be very noisy. Yes. That's why they're not allowed in. It's because of the, you can grind. Yep. You can do all kinds of. Air inches. Air inches. Yeah.
That's why they're not.
And the borders are small, so your, and your buildings that are next to it are, can be closer to. The setbacks, I think, can be, so the noise that you're talking about can even be closer than.
The motorcycle shop at one time, and it was a mess when it was a motorcycle shop. They were racing motorcycles and it was.
All right.
Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any other questions from the council? Are there any questions from the public on ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash fifteen? Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Clinker?
No.
Nargie?
No.
Snyder?
Nay.
Reynolds?
No.
Wees?
Aye.
Williamson?
No.
Downing?
No.
Ordinance fails.
On to ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash sixteen.
Ordinance, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance Tippecanoe County, Indiana, Uzo Amendment Number One-O-three dash A, self-storage warehouses in urbanized areas.
What is the?
I move to hear ordinance.
I move to hear ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash one B.
No.
There are six.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
I mean sixteen. As soon as I get my eyes.
Nancy Sirkin.
Mister move to second, sir.
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. To give you a little background on this, you probably noticed over the past few years, self-storage businesses have grown tremendously around through and throughout our community, and what prompted me on this particular issue was the Coke bottling plant that had been there for years and years and years on Sixth Street. Always saw that as a great redevelopment opportunity for the city and for the neighborhood and for our downtown and such, so when it up for sale, I was pretty excited that it was for sale and something might possibly be able to be, to be done with it, and then it was sold, and I was still excited until I found out what it was going to be used for, and self-storage was really the last thing in my mind that I thought, thought it would be and such, so, you know, again, that site is a gateway between Lafayette and West Lafayette, and we really, and wanted to see something that would add more vitality, vibrancy to the, to the neighborhood, you know, put more people on the street and in the area, in the neighborhood, and self-storage, though there's not anything particularly wrong with it, it just doesn't add to that and doesn't really meet the goals we were trying to do, particularly for the downtown and the urban areas, so went to area plan commission and worked with their staff to come up with a regulation on that, and I'm not going to go into detail on that. Jackie can explain more of that, but that gives you some of the background, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point for this.
Questions for Dennis?
So I will explain, so that's the, the reasoning. So this amendment did start with Mr. Carson and the Economic Development Department when they decide, when they saw that use of the Coke bottling plant and requested an amendment so that in our urban sewer zones, I think is what it's called, self-storage would only be permitted by special exception. That is the language that we requested. We worked with APC staff. It was considered originally in January by the ordinance committee with the language that we, that we wanted. It, it's just a short statement. The proposed language that we proposed was, propose self-storage warehouse businesses located in a zone where they are permitted by right, but on property within an urbanized sewered area, as shown on Appendix E, shall be required to obtain a special exception. That is the language that we submitted that was considered in the January ordinance committee. Somehow in April, the ordinance committee was reviewing this matter again and did do a amendment to the language that was drafted by APC staff and requested by the city that made it a little more cumbersome. It was going to create issues with staff trying to enforce it. It just, it created kind of a wording that became very, very difficult, and so that is not what the city of Lafayette requested. It's not what the APC staff recommended, and so they recommended to the area plan commission to deny the April twenty-twenty-two language, which is what is in front of you today with an unfavorable recommendation from the area plan commission. However, the city council, as a legislative body, can choose to amend, recommend revisions or amendments to the ordinance, and what the, we are requesting today is for an amendment to this ordinance to incorporate the January twenty-twenty-two language that was originally draft, which is what I read, which was originally drafted by, between the city and APC staff, and request that you amend the ordinance to take it back to the January twenty-twenty-two language and then adopt the amended ordinance.
You ready for a motion then?
Why, sure.
I move we amend to the January twenty, twenty-two dash sixteen to the original January twenty-twenty-two language.
I second it.
Madam Clerk?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Amendment passes seven to zero.
And now we'll need a, a motion to call on the amended ordinance itself.
Mr. President, if you want to ask for public comment first?
Ooh, I should probably ask for pu- pu- public comment. Are there any questions on, on the amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash sixteen? Any questions from the council? There being none.
Okay, we need a, we need a.
So we need to put it on the floor for passage, correct?
I thought that was.
For passage of the amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
All right, now we can.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Amendment ordinance passes seven to zero.
Clear as mud.
And just to clarify, so this does now go back to the area plan commission since we amended what was sent to us for the area plan's commission's consideration. If they agree with the amendment that we passed today, it's, it's done and it's taken care of. If for whatever reason they don't approve the amendment, then it will find its way back here again. Correct, Mr. Hiddle?
Okay. There's a possibility we'll see this again. On to resolutions.
Resolution number twenty-two twenty-two dash ten, a resolution approving the first amendment to the agreement between the city of Lafayette and the Lafayette Armond Lodge Number Forty-nine, Paternal Order of Police.
Move for consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty, twenty-two dash ten.
Second.
You'll second it?
Chief Galloway?
Greetings. My name's Scott Galloway. I'm the police chief for Lafayette Police Department. The spirit of this request is lateral transfer program. It's an effort for hiring and retention. It's no secret. I've talked to several of you a few times about the difficulties of hiring and retaining police officers. What this will allow us to do is certified police officer in another jurisdiction, if they choose to be hired from the Lafayette Police Department, would have their seniority for paid time off count towards their seniority at the Lafayette Police Department, so an officer that has six years on of time served, if they came to Lafayette Police Department, they would start with six years on towards their PTO, paid time off.
Is this, is this also toward retirement?
No, it's just towards the paid time off for, for lateral transfers and for current officers that have transferred before, also for their retention purposes.
Because retirement is designated by the state.
Correct, for a perv, yes.
And we did, just to clarify, so this lateral program, entry program, was something that was enacted with the most recent contract that was adopted. This amendment actually expands it to officers that hired on laterally before the effective date of the prior contract because it was only being applied to officers hired laterally after January one of twenty-twenty-one, so this amendment actually is going to open it up to other officers as well.
And it helps towards the retention, yeah.
And it helps towards, yeah.
So does that officers back how far, or just any other officer that's been hired?
From another, from another department, correct?
And for current officers, so to answer your question, I believe I'm going to answer your question. So we top off at eighteen years, so at eighteen years, you're, you're top paid time off, so if they've been here for more than eighteen years, then it wouldn't add anything to them.
Right, okay. But this is only for officers who have come from another department, not new hirees?
That was the initial contract, but this is going to add, and the officers that have previously come before this contract was, was.
But it, but it's people who work for us that came from another department?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Not just hired on new?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the original contract would have done it as a, a, trying to get new hires as a, as an offer, and then this is the amendment to expand it, as, as the chief said, is to help us retain the officers that we do have.
Everybody forgot that?
Yes.
Because I'd negotiate with the FOP, and so just for clarification, it was originally passed for new, any new officer. The FOP came to me and their president and their bargaining group and said, hey, some people feel like this is unfair. There's some folks that, you know, even just a couple years ago, transferred from another apartment, brought years of experience, and they didn't get this opportunity, and I felt in fundamental fairness to those people that are out there risking their life every night, just like this new person is, that we should go back, as the chief said, as a retention method also, and afford them the same opportunity to count that seniority, only towards their paid time off, right? It doesn't change anything else, and I think that was the fair thing to do, and I agreed to that and agreed to this amendment of the contract.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public on resolution twenty, twenty-two twenty-two dash ten? There being none. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Madam Clerk?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Moving on to resolution two thousand, two thousand twenty-two dash eleven.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application for property tax abatement, Fairfield Manufacturing Incorporated, Incorporated Personal Property.
I move to hear resolution number twenty-two twenty-two dash eleven.
Second.
Second it? Mr. Carson?
Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. Very excited tonight that we have a local company, Fairfield Dana, who is making a significant investment into expansion of the, their manufacturing facility here. That's going to be a ten million dollar investment in personal property, equipment and machinery, and they're requesting a ten-year abatement on that. Tonight, we have Chris Mixis from Dana Corporation, who'll provide you some more details, and then followed up by the mayor.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me tonight from Dana Incorporated. We're a manufacturing company that leads in tier one, supplying propulsion technologies. We do nine billion in sales globally. Part of that business is in the off-highway sector, which is what our Fairfield Manufacturing operations supplies, and that business is about thirty percent of our business. We acquired this entity a few years back and have put a lot of investment into bringing the factory up to speed, bringing it up to date, adding in, you know, a lot of safety, a lot of improved technologies since we've made that investment, and recently in the North America off-highway segment, we've seen a high demand for our gears. We also have highway, off-highway plants in South Carolina, Illinois and Louisiana, but given the success we've seen at the Fairfield plant, we're looking to make an investment there in upgrading some of our equipment to add some automation, and also as a result of the high demand, we're also looking to add fifty jobs in addition to the four hundred and eighty-seven roughly that we currently have on staff there. Your support for this project is important as our overall evaluation of where to make our investment to meet this high demand, and appreciate your guys' support.
Are the fifty jobs you're adding, are they going to be temporary employees or permanent employees, or what?
Uh, no, those will be full-time union employees with competitive wages and competitive benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Lafayette.
Yeah, my pleasure.
President, ladies and gentlemen, the council, just a few comments. We certainly appreciate Dana making this investment. For those of you, some of you were here at the time, and I'll, I'll speak quickly. My second year in office, maybe my third, Fairfield almost closed. There was an emergency meeting of many of us and the state officials and others, and Fairfield almost closed, and we worked through those times to keep that plant here in this community, and it was later built or bought by Orlicon, if you remember, and Fairfield Orlicon, and now we have this opportunity with Dana, and I can tell you, since Dana has taken over the operations, I've had a chance to meet with members of their leadership team on, on different occasions. They think highly of Lafayette and the potential here. I think this is a great opportunity for us to help continue to build and solidify that relationship that we have with Dana and capture this opportunity and continue to look forward to a long and prosperous future for the company here and for our community, so I would appreciate your vote on this resolution, and we continue to move this project forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions from the council on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eleven? Are there any questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
We will need a motion to set a public hearing for June sixth at six oh two PM.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done and done. Onto resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twelve.
A resolution to approve the city of Lafayette Community Development Block Grant and Lafayette Housing Consortium Home Program and Annual Action Plan for twenty-twenty-two.
Pleasure to the council.
I move we hear resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twelve on first and final.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Reynolds, Lafayette Housing Authority, so I'm here to do the annual action plan approval, the request. It's for home and CDBG. CDBG is the Community Development Block Grant Program, and home is the Home Investment Program. The amount that we're asking approval for, for CDBG is six hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and home is one million fifty-one dollars and five, one million fifty-one and five hundred and seven dollars.
Sounds good.
The home partnership grant, we meet with both mayors and one of the commissioners for recommendations, and for CDBG, it's solely the entitlement city, which would be the mayor here.
Now on the social services, are there other organizations that ask for this, or these are the ones that?
These are the ones that were awarded.
Okay.
So there are other ones. Usually it's the same ones that ask every year.
Right, right.
But we do have a couple that were not awarded.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I am a business manager for Lafayette Urban Ministry, I know it's not a conflict of interest, but I checked with the city attorney and the mayor, and they didn't feel it was a problem because we've gotten this for many, many, many years, but just in fairness of full disclosure, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Any other, any questions from the public on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twelve? Thank you so much, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Wees?
Abstain.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes six to one with one abstention.
Onto reports of standing committees? Excuse me, reports of special committees? Miscellaneous and new business? I think that's you, Margie.
I wasn't going to wear this, but I think it'd be too distracting, so I'm just putting it here. I'm here tonight to bring some attention to May, which is National Bike Month, give, in my position, well, Margie Deverall, Economic Development Department, in my position as a bike ped coordinator, some information that you may not know about cycling in our community and. Give, in my position, well, Margie Deverall, Economic Development Department, in my position as a bike ped coordinator, some information that you may not know about cycling in our community and things that we've done. So National Bike Month is promoted by the League of American Biocyclists, and it's celebrated across the nation and has been since nineteen fifty-six. National Bike Month is a chance to showcase the many benefits of cycling and to encourage others to try it. Locally, Bike Month has been a success because of the many local events organized by bike clubs, teams, community organizations and businesses. Specifically, the league, in addition to Bike Month, has bike-friendly programs. So, there's a bike-friendly business program. And in our community, we have one gold business, Virtuous Cycles, and we have several bronze friendly businesses, Horizon Bank, Huth Thompson, Mad Love Boutique, People's Brewery, Brokerage Brewery, West Lafayette City Hall, Purdue Federal Credit Union and Westminster Village. Bike-friendly communities is another part of that program. West Lafayette is bronze. We have applied and we have honorable mention, so we need to come back and try harder. And then Purdue University is a gold-rated bike-friendly university. So, in the past, the three local governments, the two cities and the county, would get together on the pedestrian bridge on Bike to Work Day, which is in the middle of the month, it's one day, and read a proclamation to Bike Month and Bike to Work Day. And we decided, the committee that worked on that decided this year that we wanted to refocus our attention and look at Bike Month and the activities that go on and to encourage some new ones. So instead, this year, on behalf of the biking community and to promote Bike Month in Greater Lafayette, this morning at the county commissioners' meeting, the commissioners read a proclamation, the same one that we would read on the pedestrian bridge. So, in this refocus, our goal is to shift the attention from one single event to promoting, encourage and raising awareness for biking to a wider audience during the entire month. So, we have been and we will continue to work with schools, safety education programs, partner with local bike clubs, events and rides. Ideally, Bike to Work Day, we see, would be a partnership with local businesses to promote it to their employees and maybe help offering giveaways and contests throughout the month. And then we'll continue to work with Greater Lafayette Commerce, who's held workshops for bike-friendly businesses for a couple of years now. And our goal would be to increase the ten that we have now to increase it to twenty. That's our first goal. So then, and we look at, and I don't have tons here, but advantages to bicycling. One of them is that it's cost-effective. Cycling adds nearly forty-five million dollars to the Indiana economy every year. You wouldn't think that. Support for cycling at workplaces leads to lower staff turnover, reduced absenteeism and lower employee health costs. Bicycling infrastructure and programs increase property values, generate increased tax revenue, while at the same time reducing traffic congestion and the need for parking and new road construction, which benefits both cyclists and motorists. But I think most important is improvement to health and wellness. And inactivity is linked to a large number of physical and mental health issues. Unfortunately, Indiana currently ranks as ninth most inactive state in terms of regular exercise and ranks forty-first in overall health. That's not, I'm not holding that up. Studies show that more than, over half of American adults now have type-two diabetes or prediabetes. So, getting exercise, getting outside, this is, it's all good for you. And bicycling is having a revolution right now. Technology is quickly changing, urban cycling. In the past five years, technology has revolutionized active transportation with e-bikes, electric scooters and electric skateboards. And the best-selling electric vehicle in the United States this year? Electric bike. More than a million expect to be, are expected to be sold in 2022. And many people are finding that an e-bike is a cost-effective alternative to a second car, especially if they, you know, live in the urbanized area. And in urban areas, these devices are a faster way to get around and easier to park than cars. So, it's, it's a time saver. So, two more things, just a quick celebration of new funding and construction. I got a rundown from Stan Lambert at RAC, and he talked about the North River Road and North Ninth Street active transportation loop. And there's a total funding of ten point three million dollars. And that's broken down into four different projects, one of which is going to come off the Sagamore Parkway Bridge and down into the old Lafayette Golf Course and then up North Ninth Street towards Battleground. The other three are on River Road and in West Lafayette. And then locally, on-street improvements. This year, Ninth Street, Eighteenth Street and Cassous Street are all going to have repaving and restriping projects. So we'll be adding some bike lanes and sharrows that were recommended during the bicycle and pedestrian safety program that was adopted back in, in 2015. And then, for 2024, the Third Street and Fourth Street one-way conversion. There's opportunities there again to have bike lanes and sharrows. And finally, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the mayor's Bike and Pedestrian Citizen Advisory Committee that I facilitate. Not surprisingly, it started in May, Bike Month, of 2018. So they've been around for four years, reviewing and advising the city, the engineer's office and the mayor. And so I'll just name off a few. When Salem Street was repaved and restriped, there are bike lanes on there now that you've probably seen. They looked at and gave recommendations and advice on the Walbar Shriver Enhancement Corporation Plan. They insisted, or have assisted with the bike-friendly business workshops that Greater Lafayette Commerce has put on. They have been, and maybe we'll come back with one day, a review of the city codes for bikes and pedestrians, because there's some language in there that doesn't apply anymore. They looked at East Side Trail proposal near Ivy Tech. Fourth Street Restriping, again, you can, you've probably seen that with bike lanes, especially near the school up at the top of the hill. They worked and reviewed on the big fail, big trail, big four-trail review that was adopted last year. And then, they did an evaluation of, you know, a network map, looking at the community. And with their own personal experience, because they live in different places throughout Lafayette, looking at hotspots, you know, like they know that there's a problem here or a section of road or visibility, these sorts of things. And we are now working, our goal is a bike rodeo trailer, or a rolling rodeo, we like to call it. Whether that's a trailer or a box truck, we've had a couple of different recommendations, but it would be, you know, a plug-and-play bike rodeo. You show up with that trailer or truck, and it's got all the bikes you need, all of the equipment, tables, orange cones, everything that you need to do it. And finally, they are the eyes on the street, observations and suggestions, you know, not unlike that hotspot map. Every time we get together, we have an item on the agenda is, you get two minutes, two minutes and one question. So if somebody has seen something or they have a problem, you know, with something that's going on, they have two minutes to talk about it. And just at our last meeting, it was brought up that on Sixth Street by the dive, if you're going north on Sixth Street and you want to turn left onto Salem, because of the cars that were parked there next to the dive, you couldn't see traffic coming. Well, if you go and look at it now, it's painted from the curb, from the corner back, about three or four parking spaces, so now when you pull up, you can't see. Another point that was brought up is on, on Fan and Drive, where it comes up to Salem. There's a light there, and it used to have two lanes. Well, it's one lane now, but the second lane at the curb that was turned into a bike lane got real wide at the end, at the intersection, and it appeared to be a second travel lane. And, you know, bikes were getting cut off. So, since that time, thanks to Nick Stanford and his crew, they went out, they narrowed the bike lane, they put stripes across to show that it's, you know, not for cars to drive there, and improved two places. That was just during one meeting, those two came up, so. So that's it. If anybody has any questions? If anybody wants to go for a bike ride? If anybody wants to ride to work, but they don't know what streets to ride, we have a map that shows, you know, comfort level of different roads throughout the city. And, you know, an idea at the national level was to have bike buddies. So if somebody did want to ride to work or start riding, you could, you could, you know, meet one person and make that connection, and they would share their knowledge and ride with you and kind of give you that comfort level to, to do it more. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much, ma'am. You have made me sufficiently guilty. I'm going to pump up my bike tires. Report by the mayor? Reports of councilmen?
I have one, please.
Yes, sir.
Assuming I'm interpreting the local news correctly, I saw on the news that our leader of Renew Lafayette, Brad Tally, received recognition of an environmental hero, like one of nine people in the state or something like that, I believe I saw. So I just wanted to recognize him, congratulate him on that fine honor.
Any other reports of councilmen? We've come to public comment. This is your time to talk, and you have three minutes. Please be respectful to the meeting and to the councilmen and to each other.
Lloyd Wells, thirty-seven seventeen Rawlings Drive.
Good evening, sir.
Have any of you driven on Sixth Street in the block she's talking about, only driving south, where it intersects with Union Street? In order to see what's coming across the bridge, there, that fence, that line fence that runs right along Union Street is an obstruction to the point that you have to move the nose of your car out into the right-of-way of Union Street before you can see what's coming. Is there anything that could be done about while they're remodeling there? Maybe moving that line fence? I, it just is an accident waiting to happen.
Where's that bike?
The city engineer.
Pardon? What, what businesses are you talking about?
That's a Coca-Cola plant.
Coke plant, yeah.
The fence is on their property, we've looked at it before, I'd have to go back and look at the nose.
It just seems to me that there's, there's a way to avoid an accident there, and, and it's going to happen someday, and I, I just hope it's not me when it does. But anyway, so I'd throw that out for your consideration.
Thank you for your observation, sir. It's time for that?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Second, oh, all in favor, say bye.
Bye.
I want to make sure that we got away, I didn't want anybody to...